Okay, good evening everyone. Good evening everyone and thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us for tonight's Board of Education meeting. We would like to start with a pledge of the flag if you could all join me please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will begin with Dr. Byrne and the Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards.
Good evening, welcome everyone. I do have to note, it's the first time in my tenure that all of the cookies have been eaten at a pre-board meeting reception, so I think we need to note that in the record, Lauren. In 2012, we introduced our student recognition program, the Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards. Tonight, I'm proud to congratulate 65 outstanding music students, more than we've ever had before, who were commending tonight with this honor. Tonight's award recipients are music students from elementary through high school who participated in the NISMAs solo and ensemble festivals this year. So please come up to the podium to receive your award as I call your name. And we'll start with our youngest musicians. So students of Andrew Pease, Liam Brown, 5th grade, clarinet. And Liam received a perfect score, congratulations. Xavier Howe, 4th grade, piano. And we have students of Marshall Tapo, Carlotta Bjornson, 1st grade, piano. James Mackey-Reuters, 4th grade, piano. Rafferty Rafe Reuters, 2nd grade, piano. Students of Eric DeVito, Lila Bernardi, 5th grade, flute. Alexis Holba, 5th grade, flute. Coco Lax, 5th grade, flute. Ames Song, 5th grade, trombone. James Thomas, 4th grade, clarinet. Got the special handshake there. Hinano Yueda, 4th grade, flute. So moving on up to the middle school, we have students of Lisbeth Borough at Rye Middle School. Dario Abate, 7th grade, violin. Andre Anastasian, 7th grade, cello. Sebastian Auerbach, 7th grade, piano. William Auerbach, 7th grade, piano. Madeline Ball, 6th grade, violin. Alana Boiso, 8th grade, viola. Zachary Chu, 8th grade, violin. White Ernest, 6th grade, violin. William Field, 8th grade, violin. William received a perfect score. Emily Howe, 6th grade, cello. Tito Diego Weewa, 7th grade, viola. Tito received a perfect score. Philip Keryanis, 8th grade, violin. Sophia, Sophie Keshew, 8th grade, violin. Margaret Gabby Kilroy, 6th grade, violin. Marta LaShie, 6th grade, cello. Timothy Morell, 7th grade, violin. Isabella Murray, 6th grade, violin. Olivia Napoli, 6th grade, viola. Luke Padavano, 7th grade, cello. And Luke received a perfect score. Jonathan Rotundo, 8th grade, cello. Keon Sadra, 8th grade, violin. Madeline Maddie Wattington, 7th grade, piano. Kaliana Yang, 7th grade, violin. And Kaliana received a perfect score. Next, we have students of Lisbeth Borough at Rye High School. Alice Nokidas, 10th grade, violin. Alexander Gordon, 10th grade, violin. Lucas Gordon, 9th grade, violin. Jack Grassick, 10th grade, violin. Madeline Kilroy, 10th grade, violin and voice with Mr. Snowden. Next, we have students of Tyler Schwering. Malcolm Burkoff, 8th grade, trombone. Benjamin Cohen, 7th grade, snare drum. Sophia Collins, 7th grade, trumpet. Rocco DeFyth, 7th grade, trumpet. Graham Durkin, 7th grade, alto sax. Armon Josepian, 6th grade, alto sax. Rice Johnson, 7th grade, trombone, piano, and voice as an alto. Finnegan Lubfer, 6th grade, trumpet. Spencer McFarlane, 6th grade, jazz alto sax. Elise Mayfar, 6th grade, bass clarinet. Nicholas Newbart, 8th grade, bass clarinet. Calvin Rolano, 7th grade, woodwind duo. And Calvin received a perfect score. Claire Tang, 6th grade, B-flat, clarinet. Sahil Vellamore, 7th grade, bass clarinet. Christopher Waglum, 7th grade, B-flat, clarinet. And we have at the high school, students of Dan Brown. Alana Cheros, 9th grade, piano. Giselle Cheros, 11th grade, piano. Andrew Chun, 10th grade, all-state jazz alto sax and all-state alto sax. Helen Halverson, 9th grade, French horn. And Grace Wang, 9th grade, flute. So congratulations to all of our incredible artists on their outstanding achievements in music this year. And so I'll ask if our students can stay there and if our music teachers can come on up. Mrs. Dermon is going to take some photos and then we'll open the gates for you to take some photos as well. But if you would like a copy of the photos Ms. Dermon takes, just let her know and shoot her an email.
Okay, so we have a big game here. I'm going to start with the elementary students. So can my elementary students, are you all over here? And my first one.
Again, congratulations. Thank you to all the families for joining us this evening. Have a wonderful night.
Okay, and moving on for the meeting, we have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for our June 6th Board of Education meeting. I've actually learned that we have some Osborn students watching from home tonight, so hello, Sarah. We have just recognized and celebrated 65 of the district's music students from 1st grade on up through 12th grade who participated in the NISMAs solo and ensemble festivals this year. The number of students recognized is up from 45 students last year, which just goes to show how the music program is flourishing here in Rye at every level. I know I speak for myself as well as the board when I say that we love to recognize student achievement, so these nights are always among our favorite board meeting nights. The senior class prom took place this past Friday at the VIP Country Club in New Rochelle. Almost all of the students had made it onto the buses when the skies opened up. There were just a few with umbrellas waiting to get on. Thereafter, the weather cleared up and behaved itself. A big thank you to the parent-teacher volunteers who helped to make it a very special occasion for our seniors. Rye High School graduation is planned for next Friday, June 16th, at 6:30 p.m. in Nugent Stadium. This is the second year of holding graduation on Friday evening, which has resulted in a much appreciated reduction in on-field temperature. Some of us can recall the very warm days of peak sun. It has the added benefit of creating a rain date for the event, which will be, of course, knock wood, not needed. The rain date is June 17th. Big congratulations to the boys varsity lacrosse team who are headed into the final four after a 12-6 win over Burnt Hills-Balston Lake in the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Class C Regional Game this past Saturday. They play Manhasset tomorrow at 5:30 p.m. at the University of Albany, so go Garnets. Our Board of Education meeting on June 20th is our official end-of-year meeting when we will recognize and thank our retiring parent organization and parent-teacher organization leaders, so I hope you'll join us then. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Excellent, thank you. And now we will move on to presentation and discussion security update. Dr. Byrne.
Okay, so we have with us tonight our Coordinator of Safety, Security, and Emergency Preparedness, John Hawkins. And John is going to give us a little bit of history and share a lot of things that have been improved over the last number of years in the school. And he'll start with talking a bit about the evaluation that was done back in 2018-19. So John, please come on up and join us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come on.
Turn it on.
Push it up. There you go. Ah. Good evening.
Good evening.
So thank you very much for allowing me to be at the meeting to give you a bit of an update. So I'm completing my four and a half years of being with the district, and we've had a pretty busy four and a half years. Back in 2019, my company, Alteris Consulting Group, came and did an improvement assessment of the district. And then at the completion of the assessment, we came up with seven different categories that we were going to look to improve around the district. District-wide prevention, building-level planning, building and grounds, equipment and technology, emergency response planning, and training. Just to give you an idea of what those different categories are, the district-wide planning task is really a more of administrative one. We work on policies and procedures as well as establishing the Health and Safety Committee and organizing the district emergency response team. We have been very successful in creating a few policies and procedures, to name a few. We've worked on the door hardening policy that was added a few years ago. That allows staff members, bless you. It allows staff members to allow to cover their classroom doors with their vision panel with a shade in the event of an intruder. And it also allows them to barricade the door in the event of an emergency, which is normally against the fire code. So we've been able to allow that step for staff to do so. We've created school identification. When I first started in January, I met with Caitlin Saison and Gabby Peruccio where they started initiating the brand-new ID system. So I helped with them to roll that out and make sure that that was all together. We created visitor policies and we continually update our emergency plans by reevaluating them and communicating with New York State Education Department to keep them current. One of the biggest district-wide administrative actions we did was create a parent reunification program. So in the event that we had an emergency and we needed to reunite our students with their parents, we have a written plan available and ready to go. We've created two kits that are stationed in two different locations within the district. And we have a very good plan ready to go in case something was to happen so we could get our children back quickly. Our prevention category is really about educating our students and our parents about what to do when they notice different risks that are being presented by children. Giving them the avenue to, I'm sorry, give them an avenue to do anonymous reporting with the Rye Police Department. They've had a tip line for several years. And one of the things that we tried to do was advertise that and give people a place that they can go to and be able to speak without worrying about anybody knowing their We've created our emergency response teams on our building-level planning. Building-level planning is again but a bit of administrative function. We kind of retooled our emergency teams. We've collaborated with law enforcement in our drill planning. I've met with the administrative teams at each of the school where we were able to evaluate and replan our emergency procedures, whether it was evacuation or lockdown. evaluate and replan our emergency procedures, whether it was evacuation or lockdown, as well as the other shell components of our district-wide plan.
John, I just want to interject, because I know we've talked about this before with the board. One of the things that's really important in our drills and our practice is the debrief part. So, we've been running drills, and as you know, we've been running unannounced drills. But after every drill, unannounced or announced, we do a debrief with the emergency response teams. We reflect on what went well, what didn't go so well, and what were opportunities for improvement. So, I know that I've sat around a table with a team, talking about how we thought that the exit from one particular section of a building was a little slower than we'd like, and so we went back to the drawing board and looked at ways to improve that. And that's been an incredibly powerful tool in our toolkit, which is the reflection piece after every drill, every incident, every situation that comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. And to add to that point, this past year, one of the goals that I had really was to kind of get more student involvement in our emergency preparedness. And I've had opportunities to meet with the high school, the student council, and we've talked about what they thought about our drills and how they felt that our preparedness was on a district level. And they feel that they are comfortable with how everything is done, and that the teachers and the staff in our district really know what they're doing, and that they don't stress. I actually did a form I had sent out, asking students what they thought, what were their big stresses, and, you know, when we were doing Internet safety, and surprisingly enough, a lot of students, more so the older kids too, is that they don't really think about what's going on. They enjoy being in school, they enjoy being with their friends, and all the different things that they're reading or hearing about in the news, they feel comfortable because of the plans that we have in place. You know, today I had the opportunity to meet with some middle-school students for a project that they were doing, and we talked about lockdowns. And they too were really comfortable and were happy with what we're doing, and I got some really good sense from them, from their perspective, of what it's like to be sitting in a classroom in a lockdown. So, that was really helpful, and, you know, moving forward into next year, I think that's going to help us even more. Building and grounds, you know, obviously, it is what it sounds like. We look at, you know, different aspects of how our buildings are, you know, shrubbery, lighting at night. If you see, when you walk around the buildings now, we've worked very closely with facilities about how we can improve the lighting around the buildings, so that we can help prevent potential crimes that are happening. I've worked closely with Patrick Milbauer. If you noticed, some of the things we have are numbers on our exterior doors. We also have them in the classroom. These are, you know, small little things that we do, but for law enforcement, it's a huge thing. It identifies locations that they can get to quickly, rather than talking about, you know, come to the north side of the building, you know, how we identify classrooms and where they are. If we have substitute teachers, then they kind of forget what classroom they're in that day. We've got them labeled inside the classrooms, and we update them and make sure that they're available in each classroom. We evaluate our fire evacuation maps. We test them with our fire drills every year. We try to use primary and secondary egress during our drills, so that teachers understand that there are different ways that they can go, so they're not automatically going to the same place all the time. So, we update those when we see that there's a bit of congestion in certain hallways. We actually redid a few hallways this year at the high school, because we seen that some of the students were getting out a little bit slower. So, I worked with Dr. Mayer to kind of revamp some of those classroom maps. So, it's something that we look at, even though a lot of our tasks that we complete, we always reevaluate them as we move forward, because I think you get a fresh eye, and you get the ability to see if there's an improvement that can be made. One of the biggest things that we've done, and I've worked very closely with the technology department, is equipment and technology. This year alone, we've taken some big steps towards our preparedness for intruders. With the help of technology, we've added PA clocks to the classrooms at Osborne. They have a fully functioning lockdown alarm system now, which was tested at our last lockdown drill. It went very, very well. The staff and the students have reported back that they like what we've presented. You know, there's a visual aspect to it, as well as an audible, where, you know, you're getting a canned message that there's an intruder and that we must lock down, but you're also getting the visual, because now there's a scrolling message across these clocks, which are also telling people. So, we've really worked really hard on that, and we will be improving that at Midland and Milton this summer, hopefully, and adding those additions, as well as moving forward with our electronic locks in these schools as well. This has been an ongoing project for the last year or so, and we plan on this probably taking another two or three years to complete. Here in this building alone, all the classroom and office space that we must work with to try to update these locks, there's a lot of doors that we need to replace, so working with facilities and technology, we're slowly moving down the road, but we have come so far as well.
And just a reminder, when we, you know, certainly in a building like this, when we replace the locks, it actually requires, for the most part, replacing of the doors. So, that has historically, in the last two years for us, doors, you've heard me talk about a lot, as related to the Capitol Project, that is the single most difficult thing for us to get, and we're still waiting for doors for Midland that were supposed to arrive in June of 2021. So, these are, you know, that's one of the challenges we face, because while supply chain issues have cleared up for a lot of things, it has not yet for doors, and you can't just install the locks on the existing doors. So, that's part of the process, and why it's still some time before we'll be finished with that aspect of the improvements.
Another category that we've been working on hard is training, giving the staff the most updated training that we can possibly get to them, to have them be prepared. We provide safety training at the beginning of every school year to all staff members, as well as during superintendent conference days. We try to do supplemental training with them to give them a little bit more knowledge about different emergency responses that we have. One of the things that I try to really hammer down is having it be second nature, so that you don't have to think about it. You know, a lot of times that we are, as faculty and school administration, we are not really tasked with being put in a stressful situation. So, having that training and being able to rely on that in a moment's notice, it's important that we continue that process throughout the school year.
And if I could just add, John, so, I'm sorry, I keep interrupting you. The research is abundantly clear. The two most important factors in preventing tragedies at schools are prevention and preparation, and prevention in the adults knowing the students, understanding their needs, and for students to feel that they have a trusted adult and someone they're connected to at the school. And our efforts around social-emotional learning, our additional counselors that we've added, the ESS support, the, as we'll see later on tonight on the agenda, having the WJCS Satellite Mental Health Clinic on-site. A lot of the, you know, as you know, in the last couple of years, we've added a lot of mental health support for our kids, and that's a big piece of the puzzle. But when John, he said it very quickly, the sort of muscle memory, automaticity, that's where it all rests. You want teachers and kids to automatically respond to an emergency situation and know how to be flexible and adapt in an emergency situation. There's no way to harden every school and do every, there's not enough that you could do to prevent something from happening, but the response is the critical part of it. Our staff knowing what to do, our staff making sure that they're locking doors, they're closing doors, they're doing all of the procedures that we've trained into them, and we keep going back to them over and over again, so that there's no thought. We were at Midland School for an unannounced lockdown drill two weeks ago, and to see the staff jump into action, John and I were standing right in the main entrance at Midland, and seeing the staff as they swept the halls and the bathrooms so automatically, it was just right there in the front of the building. You saw a class that was on their way, walking back to their classroom, they knew exactly what to do. They went right into that second-grade classroom with Ms. Pelletiere's class, and both classes were in the safe zone. The teachers were sweeping the bathrooms in the hallway. It was instantaneous because of the repetition and the practice and the muscle memory. But we also focus on talking to the teachers about what are you saying to the kids in the moment? What are you saying when they're in lockdown to keep them calm, keep them at ease, and let them know that they're safe with them right there? And that's a big part of the training piece as well.
We've worked on the district and building administrative level as well, a lot this year, on tabletop planning and training. You know, we really spend a lot of time at the school, in the classrooms and the schools, getting the staff ready, but making sure that the administrators are also ready, because what they need to do in the background is just as important as making sure that staff are ready. So, we came up with some interesting tabletop exercises this year to put some of the staff under stress, to see how they would respond.
He didn't tell us what he was doing. We just had.
I don't enjoy it at all. But, you know, look, you know, the implementation of incident command is a really big function as a district and as an administration, is what resources can we provide a school that's in the middle of a crisis? Because it's happening so rapidly, you know, Dr. Byrne and the other assistant superintendents can't handle this alone. So, what we've been doing is working on identifying people at the administrative level who can assist during, in different functions of the district, whether it's financing, whether it's facilities, whether it's food service, you know. If we are in an evacuation, in an emergency, and we had to bring our children to another school, we're going to reunify with them, with their parents, and it's going to be a lengthy process. So, how do we get them food and water, get them entertainment to keep them occupied while we're setting all this up? So, we're kind of identifying those different roles, and as we move into next year and the year after, we're going to start building our drills into something where we may actually do a full-on drill with the police department, the fire department, EMS, and shake it all out and see how it really does well, so that we can plan moving forward. And we can always correct ourselves when we practice and plan a lot.
Yes, John, everyone knows you want to run a full-scale reunification drill.
Yes, I do talk a lot about that. You know, I do a lot of research, and I try to be as prepared as possible, and a lot of things that I've learned from cities that have dealt with this is, the biggest gripe that parents have is how long it took to get their children back to them.
Yeah.
And the frustration they have, they just want to be with them to know they're okay. If you looked at Uvalde, how parents were actually climbing through classroom windows because they wanted to get with their kids. So, being prepared and having that plan and practice it is really important for us, because when that happens to us, we're going to be able to get our children back to their parents quickly and organized, and I think that's the most important thing. You know, some of the current projects that we worked on in security this year was creating outreach programs. We did a parent university in the fall, where I met in the morning and at nighttime, talking about a lot of the updates we've had. Because of some of the incidents we've had in our news, a lot of parents are reaching out to Dr. Byrne, asking, well, what is the district doing to prepare our schools and our children? So, we will be continuing that and hopefully expanding on that. We've done Internet safety parent universities. We did one this year with the help of the Westchester County DA's office. Unfortunately, we didn't have a great turnout, but the representative, the assistant district attorney that came was incredibly knowledgeable and brought some incredible information that the parents will be able to see on our YouTube channel when they want to. Meeting with students and getting the word out and talking about what their role is in an emergency, especially in a lockdown, that's something we began, we started doing Q and As during community lunch at the high school, and working with the student council, and getting them, because their role is just as important as a staff member, because we do have children moving about the building a lot. So, if we have an alarm go off, we need them to be able to move quickly and know what to do when they can't get into a lockable space. Where are they going to go? So, that's been a bit of a challenge, and I think that we've been chipping away at it, and I think next year, we're going to have opportunities to deliver that even more.
And John, I know the students made some videos.
Yeah.
As well, for their peers.
Yeah.
About emergency procedures, which were quite good, and I think you said they'll be making some more?
Yes, there was a group of students from the high school that created a really interesting and a bit of a comedic video. Not only did it give the opportunity for them to introduce a lot of the security guards that we have in the building, because we do have quite a few new ones, but to also have them give a tip about what's important with safety and security in the building. So, I understand it got, the children really enjoyed it, and the security guards did too, believe it or not, because it gets them to kind of have that little relaxed relationship they have with their children. It's very unique, the relationship that security has built in our district, and I think we're really honored to have the people that we have. You know, if you do not know, they are all retired law enforcement. It's a requirement of the district that our security, our law enforcement experience, because there's a certain level of knowledge and experience that they bring that we really appreciate. We will be expanding our lockdown alarm systems at the other schools moving forward, this year and the next two or three years. Our hope is to get this done in, I think, probably two or three years, hopefully, and we're going to continue our training for administration and staff, similar to what we've been doing in years past. We debrief regularly with law enforcement after we do our drills. This year, we've actually included the fire department in our fire evacuation drills, and they are incredibly appreciative of that, because not only do they get to see what we are doing and what the expectation is when they arrive, what we'll be doing, but it gives them the opportunity to get into our buildings and to walk the halls and create plans for themselves. I actually got an email this morning from the fire department, they want to set up walkthroughs of the building, so they can start, you know, doing those plans. You don't realize, how far is a hose going to go? How long is that hallway? They've done some of those things, and they were shocked at, you know, how far, how big some of our hallways are in our high school. So, we're kind of expanding our footprint with them, as well as EMS and the police department, and I think that we've created a very healthy relationship with all of them. They are in the schools more often, and the children see them, and I think the important thing with them as well is that it's just another thing. It's not, it's not, oh my God, what happened? The police are here. Oh, yay, the police are here, and they get to interact with them, and I think that's really, really great. Excuse me. So, I think one of the most important things that, moving forward, is, you know, the Secret Service has a National Threat Assessment Committee that meets, and they report back on some of the latest information. And as Dr. Byrne alerted, alluded to, you know, it's very difficult to identify when an event is going to happen, but what we're all learning now is prevention is the big thing, is being able to give children an avenue to inform, where we have that anonymous reporting with the police department. They have the ability to email if they want to report something, but also encouraging them to find somebody in the school that they trust to be able to provide that information. They see a lot going on on social media. They see their friends posting things. They see other people posting things. They start to see children start to change. They went from a happy student to now being a little bit angry or upset. Maybe they're posting about violence on, all of a sudden, videos or guns or something. We want to be able to give them an avenue for them to come to and tell us about it, so that we can then go ahead and create a plan for that child. This past year, we created a threat assessment team at each building, and that is a group of administrators, guidance counselors, nurses, and psychologists, as well as the police department. They sit on that team as well. When a threat comes through or information comes through of a child that may be at risk, they will have an emergency meeting and go through this plan. It's the Virginia Tech Plan. It's by Dr. Dewey Cornell. It's a nationally recognized plan. If you would like, I can certainly share information with you tomorrow if you like, but this is a recognized plan that gives the staff in the building tools to help that child before they hit that crisis mode, and provide them services, rather than on the back end of maybe having to deal with the criminal side, the law enforcement side. We're going to give them the opportunity to be able to deal with what they're going with and prevent something from happening in our schools, and that prevention is really important. Continuing to tell parents about different things that they should be looking for in their children, changes that they may have, the way they dress, who they're friends with, how they communicate, are they becoming a little more recluse? What's interesting is that there's no one thing to look for. If you've looked at all the different shootings that have happened in our nation, there's no set of identifications to say. It's a broad spectrum. So, being able to communicate with parents of what to look for and give them a place also to report, I think is really important.
And we've worked with our local community groups, Rye Act and Rye Youth Council, Youth Mental Health First Aid, they've run trainings all year and all last They've run trainings all year, and all last year, we keep training more staff, and it's a great program. If, as a parent, you have not experienced that training, it is well worthwhile. And when they put out an ad for another, I know a few folks here have done it, I've done the training, it's just really helpful. You understand things to look for in a child that may be in crisis, and then what to do about it. So, we'll continue to offer that program in the community. We do it here in schools, and then we also work with the groups to do programs outside of schools as well.
What are the balancing aspects of that, though? I mean, in terms of, so, everything they just said makes sense, but you can also imagine the flip side of it in terms of, you know, surveillance, overreacting to signs, creating, putting a kid maybe in more crisis than they actually are because of a perception of them being, how do those get back?
Right, so that's actually a big part of the training, is understand what's typical for a young person, and what just might be something that's temporary, and what might be something that's indicating a more significant problem or situation. And I think that was really helpful to me in the Youth Mental Health First Aid training, and I would definitely encourage you to do it. There are a lot of different components to it, but it's, ultimately, it's a fairly simple framework to use, and it's through that conversation and the talk with the others in the group. It's small group training, so I think you typically only have about eight or 10 people at most in the session, so there's a lot of good dialogue when you're going through it.
And lastly, is, you know, student wellness and school climate. You know, making our schools welcome for everyone, making everyone feel like they're a part of the school. And I think, you know, Dr. Byrne and the entire district has done such a really great job with that already, is just building that out more. I think that when we have all of that together, I think that we will do a really great job of hopefully preventing something in the future. If you have any questions, I would love to be able to answer them. I hope that, you know, that the work that we've done in the last four and a half years while Alteris has been in the district, we've accomplished some great things, you know, our new vestibule, security cameras, you know, we've gone in four and a half years leaps and bounds from where I, when I first started here. So, you know, I applaud all of you, because honestly, all this wouldn't be happening if it wasn't for the people sitting at this table agreeing to want to do these things. So, you know, you should, you know, be thankful and grateful that we're able to accomplish all these things.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate the update. I just had a question.
I'm sorry.
You don't get to go yet, John.
Don't get to go yet.
You're not dismissed.
And this might not be under your purview, but I was thinking about this the other day, because someone was asking me about how to create anonymous reporting or feedback to the district. And then I, you know, and I'm, Jane knows I'm a technology luddite, so I might not be the right person to answer this, but when you were talking, I was just going on our website, and I could not find anywhere where, again, I don't know if this is your purview or if it's more on the website design, but there's nowhere that we can find like the anonymous reporting with the RYE Police Department, and when they, when we do have the link of anonymous reporting, your email still comes up, like when you're sending the message out. So, there's no anonymous reporting on the website. So, we got to somehow fix that, I think, or work with someone to help us fix that, because I'm not sure if that's active right now.
A question, though, because I know that we talked about around the high school and middle school buildings, there's QR codes and things that bring you to that information from a student perspective. I get what you're saying from a...
Well, even the QR code on the website doesn't work, because I just tried it.
Oh, you just tried it on your phone? Oh, that's a problem.
That is a problem. We have to fix that. The ones in the hallways do, because I tested that out last week when I was in a building, but we'll definitely take a look at that.
I know, but that's what I'm saying. I went to that page, and your email still comes up when you press the button.
So, what he's saying is that it's not anonymous, because his email showed up to report?
Correct.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
All right.
We can look into that.
Yeah.
We will definitely look into that and talk to RYE PD about that as well.
Thanks.
Because the hotline, it's directly to them, to the RYE Police Department, correct?
When you call.
Yeah, that's their, that's their general number, right.
Okay. That's good, Sam.
John, could you, I know the community's had some questions for the board on, you know, adding in armed officers, and I know you've presented some research to us in the past and some analysis. Could you just give a, you know, an update on that and, you know, what the research says and how you guys have evaluated that at Alteris?
So, Alteris, we will provide the benefits of both having armed security and non-armed security. You know, it eventually comes down to the district and what they're looking to accomplish. I think that there are a lot of things that you have to look at when it comes to adding weapons to a school. You know, I did a little bit of research in case this happened to come up today, and one of the things that interestingly stuck out to me was that putting a SRO in a school is not a magic thing that's going to stop people from wanting to do harm in a building. Actually, from '99 to 2019, there were documented 197 violent incidents in a school, and only three of those were thwarted by an SRO. So, even though there are police officers in the school, it's not going to stop people from wanting to do something. Will it shorten the attack? Absolutely, but not knowing when those things are going to happen, I think that's the biggest challenge, and not being able to identify who that person is and when they're going to do those things. You know, bringing a weapon into a school and having that taken away from you if that is the first person that's engaged by the intruder is another added threat. You know, it's kind of tough. Someone like myself, I was a police officer for many, many years, and I know, you know, the training and the experience that we bring to it. But I think you have to also look at, what is it that you are looking to achieve having an SRO in a school? Is it just having armed security, or are you looking to have them be a bit of a mentor? You know, there's like three pillars of SRO, you know, being a teacher, a mentor, and being a police officer. So, is looking at those three things and deciding, are those three things that we are looking to have by bringing an SRO into our district? And I think, you know, there's plus and minuses to both, so it's really hard for me to say either side, honestly.
But I think the research really, again, even with SROs, it goes back to the training and the preparation. I think, you know, there are a lot of factors to consider, like what is your typical police response in a situation? If you're in a school that's really far from local police and the response rate is, you know, 10, 15, 20 minutes for police to get to your buildings, you know, I think our response rate is under two minutes to any of our buildings, and that's something we've tracked in situations. The response rate is one, and also the regular presence of police, which we do, we're very fortunate with our local PD, that we do have a very strong police presence in all of our buildings. Here at the high school, middle school, Detective Caputo is here every single day. He knows kids, he's walking around the building, he's in the building, he's outside of the building, and at the same time, we have officers who are assigned to stop at all of the schools throughout the day. So, I think we're very fortunate geographically, also in the way that the city of RYE has structured emergency services, that we have such a great, quick response, and we have such regular, open communication with our police department. So, I think that's certainly a big piece, and frankly, the research is sort of 50/50 up in the air, what does it get you versus what does it not? There's so many other factors that it's so clearly, it's time and distance. All you're trying to do, every intervention and every mitigation step you're taking in a building, is to create time and distance. So, when you have, you know, intruder glass on the first floor of all of your facilities, that creates time. That means it takes longer for an intruder to get through that glass with some type of tool than it would if you didn't have that intruder glass in those places. You have secure vestibule entrances, so that makes sure that, you know, people are vetted before they're coming through the door. You make sure that your facilities department, as we are, is making sure that all our mechanical systems are functioning properly with all our doors around the campus, and that we have cameras that are angled and covering every door in every building on every campus, and they're monitored all throughout the day by our security. And those are the key pieces, but the single greatest thing in all the research on school emergency situations is the training. People have to know what to do, it's got to be automatic, and that's the whole point of the drills and the practice and the work that we do with our teams.
The RYE Police Department has doubled their adopted school officer program, so now that they have even more officers that are able to come during their day shifts and spend more time in the schools, I think that's a really big thing to have. You know, there is not a lot of data when it comes to whether or not SROs are a benefit and if they will prevent intruders and active shooters. And I think it's important to also understand that in almost every single attack in a school, there has been some form of communication prior to it happening, and I think that prevention piece is really important, too. Getting people to actually speak up when they see something is really where that is going to stop somebody from doing something, whether they're posting it on social media, whether they're telling their friends. If you research a lot of it, there's, they always tell somebody something. It's being able to recognize that that is something that we should tell, and then who should we be telling it to?
As a follow-up to the prevention and the intervention part that you talked about, this is a point that I raised when we had our joint city council meeting back in April, that the research indicates that 75% of all school shooters get their gun from home. So, when we talk about things that we, as a community, can do to prevent these kinds of tragedies happening in RYE, is if you are a gun owner who lives in RYE, you lock up your gun.
The New York State and the county bringing the extreme risk protection order to the school districts now, being able for us to petition for those ERPO petitions is really important, too, where we don't have to rely on the police department, we can do it ourselves. And there's a big push on that red flag law.
And we have trained every single employee in the school district in ERPO, in the law, how to file a petition, and what it all means.
And we could do everything right, and some, you know, if you look at how other districts have planned and things still happen, we could do everything right, but as long as we continue to educate that isolating the intruder in a hallway and keeping out of sight and behind locked doors and allowing law enforcement access to our buildings, which they do, something I didn't get a chance to talk about. They have immediate access to all of our buildings, whether it's a hard key or access cards. They have access to every space in our buildings through master keys that are strategically placed in safes in the security offices, that they only have the key or the combination to get to. They have identified floor plans that they can do systematic searches throughout the building. We have provided a lot for the police department, so that they can be not only effective but rapid in their response.
How do they coordinate that? Meaning, you know, like what is it, you know, in terms of something happens, middle of the day, it's 2:30 on a Tuesday, and whoever's available is showing up? How do we know that that person has that stuff at their fingertips, or how did the police department do that?
So, you know, having the relationship with the police department that we do, we not only have them actively involved in the drill process, but we have Detective Caputo sit on our security management team that meets every other week.
Say he's on vacation.
What's that?
He's on vacation.
Well, so he is our liaison, where he's then taking that information that we're providing and in turn, turning it to his police department and giving it to his supervisors, who are then, you know, tasked with ensuring that their officers have the most up-to-date information to have access to our buildings.
But we also, the officers do the drills with us, so Gabe isn't the only RYE PD officer that's here. So, when we did that unannounced lockdown at Midland, I think there were four, three or four other officers that participated. That's how they get to know the buildings. Detective Caputo does regular tours with officers. They do training during the summer, during the breaks. They've done practice breaches of spaces, how to get into a door.
I just want, I was going to ask for a reminder about that last summer.
Yeah, last summer.
There was a particularly extensive drilling exercise that was done with the police.
In their tactical gear.
Hopefully not connected to our shortage of doors.
Excuse me?
I said, hopefully not connected to our shortage of doors.
No, no, those were doors that were going, and we had the new ones. But, you know, the cars are equipped with certain information that any officer that's on duty will have. We have certain things inside the building, they have access, and it's, those are not things we are very public about, but, yeah.
You know, one of the things that we started this year, which was a request of the police department, was these surprise unannounced lockdown drills. We have done so many in the last so many years where members of each school participate as an emergency team, where they will go in and open classrooms. And the discussion was, well, have you ever participated as a principal or assistant principal or a custodian where you felt helpless, you had the lockdown like the rest of your staff, and you need to know what that feels like, and also be able to hand the entire drill over to the police department and say, "Okay, we won't be here to help you in the emergency, so we want to give you the practice and the ability to do this yourself." So, our first drill that we were able to do was at Milton School. We had four different police jurisdictions helping us out. We had Mamaroneck, we had county police, we had the Village of Rybrook and the City of RYE. So, they all got the opportunity to come in, see how we drill, get to look at our layout of our schools, so that if that response was to have to happen, they have familiarity in our schools. The City of RYE shares the radio frequency with the Village of Rybrook and the Village of Porchester. In the event that a lockdown or an intruder is called, you're going to automatically get those two police departments coming without having to be called. You know, as a retired officer from Rybrook, I know that for a fact, that it's a standing, you know, unspoken order, that you get that call, you're going, and you are going to get an influx of people within two to three, four, five minutes. We're not going to be able to use all those people that are arriving so quickly.
And there's clarity of like, who's in charge and all that.
That's the incident command process.
Yeah, and there is supervisors within the city police department that are responsible to know what we have and be able to train with that information and those things that we have in place for them.
So, I think what's striking me, and I want to just express some appreciation, is what may not be visible to a lot of the community is all of this work that happens in coordination and collaboration, not just with our police department, fire department, EMS, all of those entities which are, you know, pretty obvious that they're going to be a part of it, but just as you were talking about, all of that debriefing and exercising that happens with every single member of our faculty and staff. And I know I always go back to this, and so everyone's probably tired of me saying it, but I remember in one of our early security presentations, there was a comment made when they were doing a tour of the building at how involved and accountable our custodial staff is, and what a difference that can make in terms of how safe your schools are. And it may not seem like the most obvious thing, but I think the involvement of all of those layers of people go into this very crucial prevention area, that you don't see a lot of flash, and it's not right out in front of your face all the time, but the fact that you all go through, not just your own drills that you do, but any, anytime, anything happens anywhere, you all sit down and say, "Well, let's look at this and see what we can learn." And sadly, that you have to do that, but you are taking this to a degree that I cannot thank you enough as a parent in this district for doing. And I think we're, the concept of continually learning, as this goes, is so, it gives me so much comfort that, you know, that this process is continually happening over and over and over again, and that every person is invested in it within our entire school community, student, faculty, staff, administrator, custodian, anyone, security, you know, I just, I feel like those pieces cannot be overlooked and should not be de-emphasized, because those are the pieces that are going to make the biggest difference, based on all the research that you... biggest difference based on all the research that you read and based on just generally understanding how you can respond better for your community. So thank you.
And I'd say just the board's commitment to this work by giving us the opportunity to bring John and Altaris on full-time. I think, what were you, the third or fourth employee of Altaris?
Now we have over 30.
Fourth employee. There was only one other full-time security coordinator in another school district in New York State. This is it. It was the one other district and then us. And having John here and his company to be able to get us to learn and practice and set up the protocols and the practices and do all of this work. In most districts, this falls either to the director of facilities, as it did here before, or the assistant superintendent for business, neither of whom are security experts. And to me, the board's willingness to support this and make the commitment to having John here on site and having this strong relationship with Altaris is why we're able to be where we are today. Thank you.
And if you don't mind me saying, I think I'd like to, you know, give a thank you to Dr. Byrne because of the environment that he's created here in the district and the collaboration of every single unit within the district. I think that says a lot. And when you talked about how facilities is, how they're such a good part of security, you know, when we have incidents that happen in our nation and we kind of say, okay, let's take a look at where we are, you know, what are we learning from that? Contacting Rob Gmigliano and the head custodians and saying, we've identified something. And they immediately stop what they're doing and repair something or put their attention to it so that hopefully it's done by the end of that school day is a testament to the facilities department and the commitment that they have to making sure that the students are safe, that this is their, this is their building. So, you know.
John, be honest, Rob doesn't have a choice. He shares an office with you.
Yeah.
So he can't get away from you.
Luigi here at the high school calling him when we have problems with some exterior doors, you know, there's a certain part of the building when the sun hits it, it heats up certain places and we notice some situations. So he immediately took care of it and it was done within a few hours. You know, I would challenge anyone to tell me a school district that has a group of people that are willing to work and drop what they're doing that they feel is important for the safety and security of the students and staff here. So I think as a whole, when you look at us, we're a family and that we work for each other for the bigger purpose, which is for the children here, so.
And I love that you're talking to students and asking them.
I love it, too.
How, what does this feel like for you? Because that's a.
That's a huge component. And, you know, a lot of parents have expressed their worry about the children's anxiety and how are these affecting them? And I think that if you're open with them and you are transparent about it, but also get them involved and be a part of it, because then they have ownership in it as well because this is their, this is their school. And protecting their school and owning it, I think is, you know, is really important.
Obviously, right, the safety and security at this level is the most intense emotional part for parents and for students and as it should be. And there's a piece in your presentation that you didn't talk about. And it's actually, I think, a piece that impacts parents and kids the most on a daily basis, and that is the traffic. And I don't think it would be fair not to mention how much impact you have in our kids getting to and from our buildings safely, helping our parents navigate and manage those roads in front of those buildings every single day. The number of parents and kids who need constant traffic reminders about where they cross to get to and from buildings, about how you move about cars in front of the building, those two times of the day at drop off and pickup are very dangerous on a daily continuous basis. And you have always been very helpful in that from my time way back on Milton PTO and standing there and counting cars and watching and helping because that truly is a huge danger every day. And so from the very small to the very big, you are 100% committed to the district and working with the district, and it is truly greatly appreciated. And we, you started by saying you were so lucky to be here and you're so appreciative of having the board's support. And the board can only support things when they are done well and they are done with such integrity and passion. And we are truly grateful that you are a part of this. So thank you for that. Anybody else?
Rita, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks so much, John. So we will now move on to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I will ask the district clerk to set a timer for three minutes. So if you hear the timer, please wrap it up. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please take, please know, we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. Anyone from the public?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jane Obadia. This is my husband Danny Obadia and our daughter Alana Obadia. Our daughter Alana is in fifth grade at Osborne Elementary, and I'd like to thank the Board of Education for affording us this opportunity to make a short statement this evening. We moved to Rye in April of 2021. Our primary motivation, like many families, was the quality of the schools here in Rye and the sense of community. Never would I have ever imagined myself standing here today, speaking to the Board of Education under these circumstances. I don't believe that we would be if our principal had taken appropriate action over these past years when repeatedly concerns were communicated to her from both parents and faculty members about the competence of the band teacher and appropriateness of his teaching methods. So let me share with you what occurred at Osborne School. On Friday, October 7th, 2022, the band teacher beyond any rational.
Excuse me. Unfortunately, this would not be the forum for these concerns to be expressed, as I stated in the notes at the time, that personnel concerns we take extremely seriously, but this would not be the appropriate forum for those. If we could go ahead and schedule a meeting in a time where the administration can meet with you to address those concerns, that would be the most appropriate way to handle these.
But under the circumstances, no names are being mentioned here. And I do feel it's so important this matter has brought to the public attention.
I do. I appreciate that. However, by virtue of naming and identifying the school and the subject matter in which the personnel, the employee works, we have narrowed down quite the field and are able to make determinations as the larger community. So again, we certainly take your concerns very seriously. We want to make sure that they are addressed. So if we could get your contact information, we could go ahead and have the administration set up an appointment with you very soon.
Yeah, actually, I have a copy of the statement I'd like to hand to the board members this evening.
Certainly. We would absolutely take that. And we'll have Mrs. Dermin get your contact information right now. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And we will be in touch. Seeing no other members from the public here, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Tom Stein, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. We will review the consent agenda. Consent agenda general.
Is it in? Yeah. Please, if you'd speak. Sorry. So I just wanted to point out before we do a final vote on it, that in the consent agenda general, there is a resolution to repeal, not repeal, rescind, policy number 4710, which is grading systems. This policy, as we were reviewing a separate policy on attendance, this came up as an adjacent policy that had language related to attendance. Essentially, what's in here is already being covered within our code of conduct and will also be captured within our attendance policy itself. And it is not a required policy, so we felt that it was extraneous to continue to have it as a policy since it's already being captured in several other places. So I just wanted to point that out to everyone that it's on here.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. The consent agenda fiscal.
I had a question about the fiscal.
Sure.
So does this bring to a close our work with Piazza? This completes Phase Two. And do they fulfill all of their obligations under Phase Two?
What they haven't fulfilled is any work that we put out to other contractors, and it was equitably resolved in the agreement.
Okay.
But yes, we've done with Piazza for Phase Two.
Okay. Thank you.
Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. And consent agenda special education. Okay, seeing no questions, can we have a final vote to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor? Seven, nothing? Thank you. On this evening's consent agenda, we have a side letter of going ahead and approving our grade-level leaders. And once again, we thank our teachers for their commitment to our students and always being focused on providing the best educational experiences for our students. In addition, we have the teacher's contract, which is here, and it's an agreement that was reached with our teachers that is more than just salaries and benefits. It is a commitment to continue to support our teachers as our teachers continue to support our students. We as a board thank our teachers, the superintendent and his administrative team for continuing to work together to make sure that the Rye City School District is the special place that it is. We have an agreement with the Westchester Jewish Community Service Center for the establishment once the funds are finally approved. For a school-based mental health service center, which will work to serve all of the students of the Rye City School District. We have an approval for Classic Harbor for administrative retreats because while summer means a break for our students, it certainly does not mean a break for our district leaders. The Board of Ed reorganization meeting resolution. There will no longer be a Board of Education meeting on July 6th. Instead, our reorganizational meeting will take place after our July 13th administrative meeting, which will be taking place at the Wainwright House. So that meeting now is on June 13th at 5:30 in the afternoon at the Wainwright House. We have the acceptance of the 2023-2024 budget vote and trustee election results, and again, we thank our community for coming out to support the district's budget. We also have approval of numerous summer assignments for ESY and professional learning and curriculum work for our teachers. And again, while the schools are closed for our students, the learning and the work for our teachers continues on. And we have an approval of a contract with Effective School Solutions for the 2324 school year, which will continue to support the district's mental health initiatives. So this is a very hefty and important consent agenda this evening that we are happy to approve. Okay, so.
If I could just add one comment. I want to thank all the members of the negotiating team from the Rye Teachers Association. We did some really good work together collaboratively. We created some new structures in the contract that I think are of great benefit to our teachers as well as to the school district and the community. Collective bargaining is not easy. It's not easy to be a representative on a negotiating team because everybody has thoughts about what should happen and should not happen. But I do greatly appreciate the efforts of all the folks that we spent many hours with in a windowless conference room, working together and just really appreciate their partnership and their collaboration. We're very fortunate to have such a wonderful group of faculty here and I'm thrilled with the outcome of this agreement.
And you deserve thanks for that, too. You were a big part of that, so we appreciate it. It's, I'll just reiterate what you said. You know, having gone through it for years and years, it's a huge effort on everyone's part, and it's always wonderful to see us come to these collaborative agreements with our teachers. They're great and we love them. And thanks to all of them and thanks to all of you for putting the work in.
All right, there is no presentation discussion number two, so now communications to and from the board. So, Policy Committee on May 17th. It sounds like you guys met.
We did.
All right. What you got for us?
So not anything final because otherwise I'd be talking about a policy. We did spend a great deal of time hashing through our attendance policy to make sure that it captures all the elements and the importance of students coming to school and attending because it's hard to learn if you're not here. So that, I think, will be coming up at our next meeting for discussion, at least the first discussion, and then we can continue that on through any other meetings we have in the summer. But hopefully we will have it ready for discussion next week or next meeting.
Okay. Great. The Technology Committee met on May 17th. Dr. Sessone, do you have anything that we should know as a board that you need to share? Are you all good? That's great. Thank you. Happy to hear it. And then Curriculum Council met on May 31st. I know, Callie, you were there? Anything you want to share with us?
Chris was there, too.
Oh, Chris, you were there?
I actually was. It was fantastic. Tricia had the last Curriculum Council meeting of the year.
Look at that!
It was terrific. There were two fantastic presentations. First one was Tom Snowden and Tyler Schwerin, who gave us the update on the new show choir that we're starting next year as a full-time class, which is just super cool for expanding the arts and for more pathways. I'm learning about another credit that we can have along the arts and music pathway, which is also fantastic. Super impressed by the 12-page curriculum that they've laid out and tying it to the commitment. So they were, it was absolutely fantastic presentation. And then, not new. Yes. Suzanne Abrams gave a wonderful presentation on the update to high school or science. What was really interesting about it is the massive revamp that's going on at the state level for standards. And Suzanne laid out a fantastic presentation, triple-color-coded, lining up new standards with core concepts and tying things. What I found really fascinating, and I'd love to get at some point into it deeper, is tying the different standards, the high school standards, middle school standards, elementary school standards. The amount of work she's put into already thinking about how, what these standards change mean from the beginning through science education and all of our courses was absolutely fascinating, a huge amount of work by her. And it was a really cool conversation on how this all fits together and where it's going, and there is still a lot of work to be done. So massive thanks. It was fantastic.
No, I think you covered it all. Stole your thunder, Callie. Sorry. I didn't expect Chris to be there.
I just liked the look of your surprise in your face when you realized I was actually there.
It's better than the looks I get for something. So that's all right. I'll take it. All right. So this is not the last piece of communication to the board. It may be the last. may be the last thing that is written. Oh, stop, okay, there we go. So tonight is one of our board members' final evenings with us, so we're going to take a moment to recognize Vivek. I would like to take a moment tonight to recognize the board service of Vivek Kamath. Tonight is Vivek's last board meeting, as he is traveling for business at our end-of-year meeting on June 20th. Vivek ran for a seat on the Board of Education in May of 2020, in a field of seven candidates vying for two seats. At this time, we had been living, working, and schooling from home for eight weeks, and patiently, and for some of us, not so patiently, waiting to see what the next two weeks would bring. While most of us were baking bread for the first time or learning how to conduct happy hour on Zoom, Vivek was thinking about how he could support his community and the schools that his daughter would one day attend. That's right, Vivek decided to run for the Board of Education when his daughter Jasmine was still in nursery school. All of this is a testament to Vivek's commitment to public service and public education. Vivek's background made him uniquely qualified to serve on the school board. He is a partner and managing director of Titan Partners, a specialized advisory firm that serves clients across the education, information, and media markets within the global knowledge sector. He has over 20 years of experience as an investment banker with clients in the for-profit and not-for-profit sectors, serving K-12, higher education, and corporate training market segments. His expertise in both finance and the education technology sector were extremely beneficial to the board, as it advised the district regarding COVID-19 and remote school technology and budget constraints coming out of COVID. Vivek is a strong proponent of the public education system, with a goal to build upon the success of the Rye Schools. During his time on the board, Vivek served on policy twice, because it's the best committee of the board, facilities and audit committees, and as a board liaison to the district's technology committee. In his board work and in his thoughtful questions and feedback, Vivek has always demonstrated a deep commitment to providing effective professional development for our teachers, leveraging data and analytics to improve student achievement, and increasing productivity within the schools through a more effective use of technology. Additionally, Vivek's board work made us all better board members. When you have such a strong member of your team, it is bittersweet to see them go. I hope that Vivek's retirement from the board is like Tom Brady's first retirement from football. Short-lived. Vivek, as you said when running for the board, I believe the best education system will benefit not only our children, but everyone in Rye. Thank you so much for your service to not only the Rye City School Districts, School District, but everyone in Rye. You will be missed.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. It's funny, because I think Jane actually got a copy of what I was about to write, so there's a couple of things that you hit in there.
I swear I didn't peek.
And the funny thing was, someone said today, when, when we first got in here, oh, will there be like groupies here, you know, on your last day, and obviously, obviously, the groupies are here, or whoever's left. But first and foremost, it's.
Make sure you read the rights.
Yes, I will. First and foremost, it's been such a great experience to serve as a trustee for the Rye Board of Education. The fact that I had the chance to work with this current set of board members made it even more special. When I ran three years ago, as Jane mentioned, I'm not sure I truly understood the role of a trustee or what I, what I was actually getting myself into. Putting aside the fact that we were going through a national health emergency and the economy was on the verge of collapse, I decided that it was an opportune time to run for the vacant position. Notwithstanding Rye's reputation for being a high-performing school district and the fact that I did not actually have a child enrolled in the district, I convinced myself that I was a perfect candidate. Fast forward three years, I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with such a dedicated and passionate group of board members, the superintendent, the administration, faculty and staff. Your commitment to our students and the community is second to none. Dr. Byrne, as a community, we are very fortunate to have you as our superintendent. Your leadership skills were highlighted and commended during COVID, but more importantly, the agenda and the long-term vision you have laid out for the district over the past six years have been critical to our success. We have immensely benefited from your steady hand, your deep and adept understanding of educational issues, legislation, and policies that impact the district, your superb communication skills and transparency with the community, and your genuine and empathetic approach in solving the challenges we, we face as a district. Coming into this position, one believes they can make wholesale changes out of the gate, as Chris always talks to us about. What I realized over the past three years, regardless of whether it's sports, academics, technology adoption, assessment, D E I, or our, or our hiring practices, change in an institution like ours takes time, patience, and the right leadership. Luckily, we were working from a very high standard and exceptional foundation. But the key to our success is, has been and always will be our strong human capital. Leadership and the right talent enables effective change management. Rye City Schools is fortunate to have such talented and dynamic leadership. In my three years on the board, we've witnessed firsthand the positive effects behind investing in our human capital. Tangible examples include the extensive professional development that we've made accessible to our teachers, or the onboarding of fresh and new leadership both at the schools and within your administration. Knowing that we have the best human capital across the district and a commitment from our community to make this our highest priority investment will have profound and exponential impact on our students. Through the leadership of Dr. Byrne, our administration, principals and teachers, we've been able to implement an array of new solutions and investments across the district, such as new formative testing solutions, a new early childhood reading curriculum, increased support for mental health services, additional staff for special education, new security solutions for district safety, as we talked about tonight, and much-needed infrastructure across, across the district, to name a few. These initiatives would not have been possible without the leadership of the individuals here today. Thank you again, Tricia, Brian, Erin, and Gabby, who for, I think, the first time in three years wasn't here tonight, for your guidance, your leadership, and your dedication to our kids and the community, and ensuring that these projects both had the buy-in from our stakeholders in the community, and your ability to successfully execute these initiatives. To my fellow board members, all of you, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve alongside of each of you. Your wisdom, dedication, and commitment of education has been inspiring. Your collaboration, your open-mindedness, and your willingness to go against the status quo has been much appreciated. I know you will continue to embrace change, seek innovative solutions for our district, and never lose sight of our core mission, the Rye Commitment, which in the end is to provide a quality education that empowers every student in our district to reach their full potential. So thanks again for the opportunity to serve, and I look forward to continuing to support the district and my colleagues in the future. Thanks again.
I feel like we should do the handshake line.
I know.
I feel like we should put you to handshake line.
Vivek, thank you, it has been a wonderful experience, and Sean, we are very excited to have you at the table because we know you will be a wonderful addition in Vivek's absence, so thank you. We have just information on our agenda, Dr. Byrne.
So with the, with the approval of the budget and the certification of the vote, so this is our first draft of the tax warrant. So we know now, based on the budget approval, how much the tax levy will be for the coming school year. It will be finalized very close, a little bit later on, once we get the final assessment total. So that literally comes down to the day of issuing the tax warrant, when the last calculations are done. But it is, it's a legal requirement, and it explains how much the district is collecting in tax levy and all sorts of other related things, like the penalty schedule and things like that on the tax warrant.
Okay, great, thank you. And we will be moving into executive session.
Well, there is one thing I wanted to call out.
Sure.
This week, the board received a really fabulous letter from a parent about some, some wonderful work their child received since middle school on at the tutoring center, and called out the one-to-one connections, especially from Jamie Stabile, over the course of the years. So many good things happened, this is a kind of, it's a friend of mine, Holly Hartman, sent us the letter, and I told her I'd say this, and something I said along the way is like, we see the end result all the time. Her child graduated straight A's and is off to Villanova, and we see that wonderful thing. What we don't see are those one-to-one connections with teachers and administrators and the people in this district who care. So when we hear about those things, I want to call them out, because that's where the magic happens. And it happens all the time, all over the place. So when we get a letter like that that says, thank you, I think it's just a great time to call out those things. We know they happen, and when we see them, they're, they're wonderful. So thank you again to the administration, thank you to the teachers, thank you to the people that make this stuff happen all the time.
Agreed. It's one of my favorite things to be able to do, to send messages along and say, great news for the day, I just know every, I mean it, and it's nice.
I've said it a lot, the times I get thanked for doing a thankless job are pretty big.
Yeah, they're worth, they're worth noting, for sure. So we will need to move into executive session, so if I could have a motion to move into exec, that'd be Tom Stein, seconded by Vivek Kamath. Yes, well, he gets the final say.
He's the final.
Yes, yeah, okay, can I just, we won't be returning. Vivek, thank you for your last vote in our board meetings. Everyone else, have a lovely evening.
We did the motion.
Do we need a full vote to go into executive session?
I think so, yeah.
Full vote, everybody who's in, that's seven, nothing. Thank you.